I'm going to call a CPC meeting to order at 7:33. And this meeting is being recorded. We have... Let me get the agenda. I got one. Thank you. We have consultants in, Danielle?
Yes.
Are they here?
They are.
Why don't we hear what they have to say and move into our regular meeting? We're still within time, so we have nothing time certain.
Great, okay. Dylan, thank you. I just wanted to just introduce our consultants from Klein Felder. Adria and Cecilia are here. Joe Brizzi is also here. Our project director. Can everyone hear? Okay, great. Thanks, they're here to just give an overview of the study that they've been working with us on with DPW, you know, as far as wastewater planning. And they're here to share where they are with this and to have a bit of discussion. So I'll turn it over to either Cecilia or Adria. Oh, Cecilia.
I'm going to unmute myself.
All right, here we go. I couldn't, I didn't know if I was able to unmute myself or not. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. Thanks Danielle for the intro. As Danielle mentioned, I'm Cecilia Corona with Klein Felder. And here with me is also Adria Fichter. We've been tasked by DPW, Mr. Brizzi, on doing a analysis of potential growth once a sewer comes to North Reading. So Adria will walk us through the scope and what we're tasked to do and what the goals for this meeting are for us in order to speak your input on how to finalize our findings. Danielle, I'm going to ask you for a favor when people comment. Everyone seems, looks very tiny in my screen. If you could identify them so I can take proper notes and figure out who's speaking, please?
Yes. And actually, if the speakers can identify yourselves when you ask questions, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Will do.
Okay. Okay, Adria, are you allowed to share your screens? I hope so.
Yes, you should.
And you all see my screen now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so as Cecilia mentioned, I'm Adria Fichter. I'm the project engineer on this effort that we're working with Joe on. This is a wastewater system financial assessment study. And we'll go through, you know, the scope of work and where we're at now. We'll go through some project background, the project area, some key definitions. You know, we're working with some of these definitions day to day. We know they'll be new for some people, so we'll walk through those. We will talk about the Part One and Part Two of this analysis. Those are kind of distinct parts. Part One is mostly the Klein Felder scope. It's the, you know, betterment assessment as well as the water and wastewater capacity assessment and debt repayment. Part Two is property valuation and new growth. And this is mostly our subconsultant, FXM. And then we will go through the final steps for this analysis. So some background, the primary goal of this is determine how the town will pay for the proposed municipal wastewater project and understanding what financing mechanisms will be needed and used over the long term. So I just mentioned the different parts and, you know, what those include. So Part One includes some GIF mapping. So I'll show you the, you know, the project area in a second. Water usage analysis, wastewater capacity analysis, a betterment methodology and assessment, and as well as debt repayment. Part Two is, you know, new growth, the new growth assessment, a build-out analysis based on that new growth, any zoning recommendations that are required, and a survey of businesses and property owners, you know, along the proposed sewer route. And then we'll go into next steps.
This meeting is being recorded.
This is the project area, you know, along Concord Street, Park Street, Main Street, you know, as well as portions of North Street and Mole Road. So the, you know, the green line shows the proposed sewer and the pink shows kind of the parcels that abut that sewer line. So it's, you know, shows the proposed area just for, not the expansion area. So looking at that proposed area, this is the distribution of parcels by type. So this is residential, you know, use code, commercial, industrial, and exempt. And so exempts are properties that are owned by the town, by the state, or federal. So, you know, it's a very small portion, but seeing this, you know, we're talking about nearly 80% of the properties abutting sewer being residential. So I mentioned that we're doing a water and wastewater capacity analysis. So the town is currently permitted for 500,000 gallons per day, average daily flow. This is wastewater flow to GLSD, so Greater Lawrence Sanitary Sewer District. So we are estimating wastewater flows using current water usage. So, you know, that's a pretty standard calculation, but we're working off of current water usage. And we will be evaluating, you know, what capacity remains based on that permit number. And at this point, this doesn't take into account new growth. We will revisit this, you know, further on in the presentation. But at this point, we're kind of, we're evaluating where the town is with respect to that 500,000 gallon permit number. I also have a note here that Wright Pierce, the, you know, consultant that's working on the sewer design, did a capacity analysis that, you know, we're referring to as well. So we're kind of confirming, corroborating their numbers. So here, I'm going to get into some kind of specific definitions and hopefully I can kind of boil those down for you. And certainly Cecilia or Joe, if you feel like I'm not hitting the mark, jump in. But this is a, you know, very legally used definition of a betterment, a special property tax that is permitted where a property within a limited and its determinal area receives a special benefit or advantage from the construction of a public improvement. So this is just to say all the parcels that we saw, that all the pink parcels abutting the proposed sewer will be assessed a betterment, you know, because now those properties would be improved based on their access to sewer. There's kind of two different ways to think about how the money gets split up. The sewer special assessment, the city council may assess all or a portion of the cost of sewer system plant and facilities. And so there's general benefit facilities, and we'll show a breakdown of this. Hopefully, the visual will help you. But this includes pumping, general benefits includes pumping stations, kind of the trunk sewer line, force mains. Special benefits are, you know, your gravity sewer mains that are just serving the abutting property. So this is just, you know, benefits for those specific properties and not maybe the whole town as a whole. Hopefully, this visual kind of helps you break that down. So we're working off of understanding a total project cost. And that cost is used to determine how much the betterment assessment will be. So it's based on, you know, a portion of that total cost. So the total project cost, less any other revenue sources, will be the eligible cost of a wastewater project. And then that is further broken down into what I just mentioned, general benefits. The pump, you know, pump station, force mains, and the special benefits, which is just the gravity sewers. The select board will vote to determine how these costs are divided. But this kind of shows you the breakdown of, you know, where the funds are going and how they fit together.
Adria, can I just interrupt you for one second? I just want to check our waiting room to be sure that there is no one waiting to come in.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry. Go on. I mean, it's all set.
Can you hear us, Adria?
I can hear you now. Can you hear?
Yeah.
Are you talking to me? Sorry.
Maybe we're just saying that we're all set. There's no one in the waiting room. You can continue.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. All right. Let me go on to the next one. Okay, so this is kind of just another way of seeing what I've previously said. The special benefits facilities, these are the pink parcels abutting the town wastewater collection system. The general benefit facilities are, you know, all residents would benefit from this. So this is the wastewater conveyance as well as land acquisition and administrative fees associated with the project effect. So the recent revision to the sewer file out that I believe was in June allows for this cost, you know, the split of these costs to be determined by the select board vote. So this kind of goes a little bit further. Part of the general benefit can be, you know, ultimately assessed as privileged fees or as betterment. So this is facilities that, proportion of general benefit facilities cost assigned to parcels along the proposed collection system. And then the privileged fees are assigned to future users. So these are those that would connect later on, you know, after the initial part of, you know, the initial betterment were sets for the first properties. So I keep saying betterment. We're evaluating three different betterment methodologies for determining, you know, the wastewater, the estimated wastewater contribution as well as, you know, the estimated costs. So these, the three methods are listed right here. The water use method, so this is based, you know, primarily just on historical water use for the properties. There's the Title V, current build method. So this is based on the existing building footprint and use type. So, you know, Title V has very specific flows that are associated with those. And, you know, we're using those based on what is currently built and currently zoned. We also are evaluating Title V full build-out method. So this is looking at the parcel size and flow projections based on current zoning. So what would be allowed based on what is currently zoned. For each of these methods, we're establishing a cost per sewer unit. And, you know, the total cost will be dependent on how many sewer units there are. So the more sewer units there are, the less the betterment segment, you know, per each unit is. We are also evaluating debt repayment. So this is analysis on the 30-year general fund annual service obligation. This includes a payment schedule. We're currently evaluating worst-case scenario. So this is, you know, not including any grants or other available funding. But it does include an estimate of the betterment assessment. Once we get to final, and we'll talk about this, it will include a comparison with the net property new growth projections as part of Part Two and analysis on the additional potential revenue sources as well as a calculation of the return on investment. I'm hopping into Part Two. This is FXM, a super.
Adria, getting started for a second?
Sure.
Do we want to take questions on Part One before we start Part Two?
Sure.
Or Danielle, I'll leave it up to you. Do you want to keep on going or are there any questions so far?
Does CPC have any questions?
Any questions? Warren.
Yeah, just, can you hear me okay?
Tell them who you are.
Yeah.
Okay, this is Warren Pierce. My question is, when they, when you do the historical water use, I'm assuming that you would be looking at the winter months use historical in order to eliminate the irrigation part of it since that part, you know, for people watering the lawns and filling their pools and things like that, to give you a more realistic idea of what the real use is during that, on a daily basis.
We looked at five years' worth of data. Specifically for that to flush out peak and have a realistic assessment of the consumption.
Okay. But it's just that if you.
Still wouldn't be weighted.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's definitely going to be weighted towards, especially depending on how much, how many people have big lawns in that neighborhood. So my suggestion would be that if you're going to use five years of data, take the winter months, take the actual use during the winter months as a far better example of what they're actually using, what's actually going back into the sewer system as opposed to what's being poured on the ground to water the grass and fill the pools.
I have a question to my, this is Dave Redloff. Is on the betterment, if you have.
Can you say your name again? Sorry.
Dave Redloff. CPC.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. Thanks. So on the betterment with the way it's enacted with someone that just installed a brand-new septic system because they had to, there is no option for sewer? What, how is that being structured or do you have a structure to that or a recommendation for that?
I'll defer to Joe, but from standard practice, everybody gets assessed a betterment. The town may elect to do department payment or set up different ways of collecting, but from a standard analysis, everybody gets a betterment. Everybody that abuts gets assessed a betterment. Joe?
Yep, that's correct. In this study, it's just everybody that is fronting it will have access to the sewer and will get a betterment. But as we go forward and if this project, you know, goes forward, then we can look at other options if that is a specific situation for a few parcels.
I mean, perhaps if someone, it's eminent that the system's either going to expire or there's something to do with the Board of Health. There needs to be some town coordinated temporary measure that they could recommend. Again, it depends. If you're five years away, you really can't do that. But I mean, if it's something within a year, it just seems like to spend $25,000, $30,000 to put in a septic system. It's a little weird.
Yeah.
And then get a betterment. Then get hit with a betterment.
Yeah, Warren Pierce. In my experience, what a lot of towns have done, what some towns have done, is if there's a Title V problem where a system is, has a technical failure but could be, could continue to operate, there was a special dispensation given to them so they could continue to operate that system until the sewer was in. I think that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Andover did that and a few other towns that I know of did that. But if it looked like, I mean, if you were looking, you know, 10 years out, of course, you wouldn't want to do that. But if you're only looking two or three years out for the sewer to be, to get by that property, they would give them, they would allow them to maintain, do maintenance on the existing system until the sewer came in. And I think that's the kind of thing you're talking about. Other towns have done that.
But I think, I think we're getting far afield here. They're trying to do an analysis of the system for, everybody is going to be in the system at the beginning. And then we, once that's done for a betterment cost, then the town goes back and looks to see the individual person's issue. So right now, they're just doing, this is an analysis and information from us.
Oh, you get that, assigning the betterment per property. No, I totally get that. I was just saying, has that been in the analysis or it could be in the zoning one here, you know, on how we address and start it up?
Right, that's, that's, yeah.
Because what I'm afraid of too is, does that stop development during this period? A couple, couple of years? Because someone wants to build something, a business, but they can't connect yet. And their option is to put in an expensive system, far more expensive if it's commercial than, than, you know, residential system. So does development in North Reading just stop for two to three years until we get, you know, plus?
Right.
So we get a sewer? And that, you could be facing that. If you're an owner, I wouldn't put in a big expensive system when I knew I could do that. It's just something I got to think about.
Yeah.
That gets back to Part Two maybe a little bit too? I'm good though.
Any, any other questions? Okay, I think you're, you have the flow for Part Two, please.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Bye, Adria.
Okay.
All right, so I'll go through each of these, but just in general, we're going to talk about new growth assessment, new build-out analysis, and a survey of business and property owners. So this is, you know, mentioned in the scope of work, but there are two significant financial benefits from construction of the sewer. So this is property value increases for property owners abutting the proposed sewer and new growth tax dollars for the town. So, you know, this translates to new growth analysis for FXM. And, you know, the questions that were, that they're going to be able to answer with their analysis is, what is the potential new growth? What are the potential financial benefits related to this growth? So they, you know, looked at property sales in North Reading and compared to similar nearby communities that are both sewered and non-sewered. And, you know, they're assessing potential increase in value of those properties as well as just net new growth. So based on that new growth, they completed a build-out analysis in the proposed sewer area. So this is looking at both commercial, industrial, and residential properties. They are using current zoning regulations and current market demand. So they want to be able to determine, you know, based on the build-out analysis, can the proposed sewer area accommodate the amount of estimated future development with current zoning? So if not, they're tasked with making recommendations on the zoning regulations to allow for optimal development. They also completed an electronic survey, which I believe is actually ongoing. So we're trying to understand, you know, from, directly from businesses and property owners, how, you know, how they feel sewer impacts them and gauge their interest in sewer, you know, in the future. And so I've highlighted two of the questions that are included in the survey. But it's just understanding from them, you know, is, do they think that the highest domesticity of their property is limited without sewer? And do they think that they have a disadvantage related to, you know, other areas nearby that do have water and sewer service, even compared to some of the areas in North Reading that have, you know, the MWRA sewer service? So those are, you know, questions that are being asked and, you know, by FXM with this survey. So, you know, FXM has, you know, nearly completed their work. There will be a final report that will be a compilation of Part One and Part Two. You know, at this point, you know, we're working with the town to get their input on decisions that they need to make on both assessments. But we'll be finalizing the betterment assessment and we'll be calculating return on investment, comparing new growth projections and debt service based on FXM's work. And this is where I'm revisiting the water and wastewater capacity. So we're assessing water and wastewater demand based on the projected new growth. So we need to understand with respect to, you know, your current intermunicipal agreement with Andover where you have a maximum daily water demand of 3 million gallons per day, you know, how that new growth fits into that as well as, you know, the $500,000, 500,000 gallons per day that you're currently permitted with GLSD. So understanding how, you know, the proposed growth fits into that as well. So I, you know, mentioned what the outcomes are, but I'm trying to highlight some here very specifically. So as part of Part One, you know, we'll be distributing maps of the proposed sewer area and expansion area. We'll be looking at the, completing the water usage analysis, including the evaluation of the intermunicipal agreement and updated wastewater capacity analysis, including any projected new growth. The betterment assessment with the selected method. So this will be, you know, a dollar per sewer unit for, you know, different types of parcels. And we'll also be finishing debt repayment analysis, including the return on investment calculation. Part Two will include assessment on new growth, so this is the potential for commercial, industrial, and residential property value increases and the associated net new tax revenues. The build-out analysis will assess the projected new growth. And this will ultimately give us number of, you know, increases in dwelling units as well as square footage of commercial and industrial growth. If there, if it's necessary, zoning recommendations will be included to, you know, if, to account for this new growth in this proposed sewer area if there's any hindrances there. And then we'll include the survey results. So at this point, I know Danielle, that we wanted to talk about the potential for new development within the proposed sewer area, understanding the priorities for remaining water and wastewater capacity once those are established and vision for mixed use development, certainly in Main Street corridor.
Thank you. I, I, thanks for giving us that overview, Adria and Cecilia, of the work that's being done. I think that, as, you know, as part of the Andoverian work, there are going to be, I think, a couple of discussions with the CPC. And at this point, it would, you know, one of the things that we'd like to get some input on is the, kind of the CPC's vision for how the Main Street corridor should, should look. And, you know, what we have, you know, provided and used as a starting point, the master plan that will be completed in 2020, I thought this would be a good opportunity to, just in light of, just in, with the context of these, you know, outline of this day that's being done, just have, have an opportunity to have some discussion about how the CPC would hope the town development would proceed in the town, especially in Main Street during this project.
So, you want?
Do you have any thoughts or feedback about that?
Well, this is Dave Redloff again. So, I mean, I think the, the study that we did that recommended the mixed use on Main Street, we, I think we're all in support of that. And at that time, I don't think, I think the sewer crept up really quickly on the, on the heels of that. So this is a perfect storm, in my opinion. But I think one of the questions in the zoning analysis that might become some output here. So along Main Street or in the diagram that showed kind of the coverage area, it mentioned 70-plus percent residential.
79.
Yeah, 79, thank you. What is the opportunity, and that's maybe what they're going to show us, that is specifically in residential zoning, out of our different residential zones? Or how, you know, what's business, highway, general, that, that they recommend should be mixed use, if you will? So is that what we're going to get? Because I'm not, I'm not prepared to say what I think needs to be changed over, but that's what generally makes sense to me, is to try to, I'll get that percentage of residential. I wouldn't say down, but the business went up and just try to get modulated somewhat on that, and that, that new hot corridor, if you will, of sewer availability. Yeah, there it is.
Yeah.
I think one of the ideas is to try to get a sense of how, how development could be prioritized and the kind of development that we would most like to see the sewer be the catalyst for. I think that, you know, so far, what's been looked at is how are these areas zoned currently? Well, Concord Street is mostly, but not all, you know, commercial and industrial. And Main Street is mostly, but not all, commercial with some residential. And I think one of the things we'd like to try to figure out is, you know, there are some options for what kind of development we want to target through this sewer project because it could enable quite a lot of development. It could enable, you know, last, you know, what scale of development really is appropriate and what's the right mix to be aiming for. I think we would have an opportunity to add some mixed use and residential development in some, in some areas on Main Street. But how much? Just the amount? What's the right, you know, what kind of, what would be the right vision for that? I think is, is one of the things that, you know, kind of like to start to, to try to get, to try to.
So is that, are we, are we tasked with that?
Yeah.
Right now, you're on the spot.
Which I'm, I'm fine with. But are we, are we going to get more some from the consultants or?
I think what the consultants are going to be helping us do is to try to figure out based on the potential that's presented by the sewer, what that, what those mixes could look like. And that's not, I think, a decision or anything to be made for tonight, but just kind of general feedback.
But realistic too along that, along this pathway, because you, you look at just Concord, the beginning portion of Concord up from Main is very residential. Let's be realistic. It's not, let's recommend that this be all mixed. I mean, how much of that is really going to be realistic in the short term or even long term? But certainly, I think, you know, down Main Street is just wide open, Wild West. I mean, but some portions of it, we need to be realistic. They're not going to really change over to a business.
Warren, do you have a thought?
Warren, do you have a thought?
Yeah, Warren Pierce. The, the, there's already a pretty substantial demand, I think, for sewer system from, from some of the existing businesses. I mean, there aren't too many, I know a lot of the restaurants on the Main Road are having a continuous battle to try to keep their systems operating. So they'd be a direct beneficiary of this. And I, and I would imagine that the vast majority of them would endorse it very quickly. So, because considering what it costs them to take care of what they're taking care of, betterment would be not that big of a deal, from the ability to tie into sewer. So but even, even, we know, we've had some problems at Walmart, and I think Stop &amp; Shop replaces their system about every three years. I mean, there are, there's a pretty, there's already a pretty substantial demand right now for this kind of a, this kind of a, of a utility, without adding any new, any new stuff to it. So, so, and I, but I would think that, you know, based on some of the studies we've had done, that some level of mixed development would be okay. But there are still some industries, some businesses that we don't have out there that would, that would probably come. And we try to do some, encourage consolidation of some of these parcels, which would, which would probably happen when there was sewer, because then you could put something substantial in there. Because a lot of these small properties don't have any room for a septic system of any kind. So you can't, can't put anything there, so.
I can, I can see change on the upper part of Concord Street, where there's some big lots, there's still a couple of trucking companies in there. And if sewer's around, they're gonna, their property's going to become very, very rich.
Well, the thing that we're gonna, the thing that we could probably end up with up there is, we, we actually had somebody try it one time, but we, but we, we don't have any hotels or any.
No, we don't have any hotels.
We don't have anything of any kind like that, because we can't provide sewer for them.
We got, we got office space that has huge parking lots, which they don't need. And they have a huge parking lot, because there's a septic system underneath the parking lot for their square footage. That's going to be changed, that would change.
Right.
We would be able to maybe, we got Class D, I think, one of our members had said.
Well, we had a, I forget what they call it, a weekly hotel or something, they tried to.
Right, they wanted, it was a very small hotel, wanted to get in.
They just couldn't, they just couldn't get a big enough septic system.
Nope, they couldn't.
And we're running into issues with conservation and everything else. So, so there are, there are businesses like that, that would be nice to have here, that will, that will be able to show up, I mean, and, and primarily probably on Concord Street.
Right.
And not, not so likely on Main Street.
No, it's not on the final, it's not landmass.
We don't have a laundromat. We, we can't, because the water use is so high on a laundromat that, you know, you couldn't build a septic system big enough to handle it.
Right.
If it was a laundromat of any size. And it's the kind of thing that would probably get some use.
Yeah, in restaurants.
Especially from the, from some of the compartment buildings and so forth. You'd probably get people that would.
Get them in there, instead of going to Redding or other towns.
Right, instead of going to other towns, right.
You know.
So, but again, as I said, for the, the restaurants, there are a lot of the restaurants that would be, that just could hardly wait to get something like this.
Oh yeah, no question about it.
They're having a constant battle with their systems.
But yeah, mixed use on Main Street is the, you know, we, we started to rezoning on, on that recently. And with sewer, we'd be able to just, I think, do a real rezoning of Main Street, get mixed use going, which, you know, get a lot of different uses in there. We're hoping for consolidations of some of those smaller lots together to make a bigger, a bigger lot, so they could put something of, of real means there.
That MAPC study that indicated that we needed to do some, that we needed to provide more, more housing on there, and some more small businesses.
Yeah.
There was a difference.
Housing upstairs, businesses downstairs.
Well, however we do it, I'm not sure that the mixed use model is as popular as it was when we started out.
It may not be.
But, but there still is that demand, but, but, but that doesn't affect the demand that was identified.
No.
For housing and for businesses to service those housing, that housing. So I think that still exists.
Yeah, it does.
So let's talk timing here. What's, what's the timing of the report? Is Adria, has she told you when this is coming?
Joe, can you remind me of the, the timing for parts one and two of this, of the report? For Cecilia or Adrian?
You're breaking up a little bit, Danielle, can you repeat that?
We just, we need a refresher on the timing of the deliverables. And I, I can take a stab at it, because we talked about it the other night. And anyone could jump in and correct me if I'm wrong.
Is he on?
So the analysis is way on its way. We have a meeting with the, we have a workshop with the select board, and Joe, there's additional participants, other than the select board members, on August fifth, to present our findings, both from part one and part two. And then there is a meeting after the fifth, I believe, is August eighth, after the workshop, to, to reconvene with the select board to get either some specific feedback, or to get approval from our results, and then move on to the final report. We just want to make sure that we have buy-in from the board in terms of our methodologies. And also, as Adria mentioned earlier, we need the board to vote or make determinations of how we're splitting the, the project, the project cost between what's general fund and what's betterment. And I mean betterment for the, for the existing properties. So once we have feedback on those, we can finalize our numbers and issue the draft report for comment.
Mrs. Jones.
Joe, are you?
I'll just add to that. I'm just going to add to that, Mike Gilberto, town administrator here.
I'll have him.
We are, we're looking to, to brief the select board in a workshop-style meeting on a Friday evening, and then to have a more traditional presentation in a hybrid-type meeting at their regular select board meeting that Monday night. And then I think the thinking is that we would be taking, you know, the report in, in its form, you know, whether it's in its final, or what we think, close to final form, to the other boards and committees, chief among them this committee. So we expect to be coming back to you, actually, in August, with something, you know, more detailed with, with findings, and with some level of proposal or recommendation in terms of the financing for the project, as well as what we're projecting for development and how we're projecting it. And then, you know, sort of, I expect that there may be some evolution of what that model looks like as we go through this process, getting more feedback. And ultimately, once we, we get to a spot where we're looking towards a town meeting, having public workshop-style discussion, where the public can come in and ask their questions freely, much the way we did with the secondary school building project, now ten years ago, I guess, at this point.
Or more.
So, yeah, so that's sort of the thinking. So this, you know, this body was unique in that, because of the, the sort of vision aspect of it and the growth aspect of it, it's really, you know, a planning item. And so Joe had written in with Danielle's help to the scope that we get this feedback. And we know, and I think we kind of knew where we were going to start. It's the master plan and some other studies that you all done over the past, probably ten years at this point in time, now maybe eight years. So we started with that, but wanted to sort of get this type of feedback here as well.
Okay.
Good recap.
We'll just note, you know, we have a working group, that's public work staff, finance staff, the planner's been participating as well, and select board members, O'Leary and Studo are also actively part of those conversations. Neither of them could join us this evening, but they have been in, it's got to be hundreds of hours of meetings at this point. And again, we are, we're rapidly approaching the point where it's, you know, we're looking for even broader feedback, starting here, but then expanding.
I, I think the feedback from the board, we're missing two of our members tonight.
One's on, I think Chair Myers is.
She's on, but he had to step away.
Oh, yeah.
Childs related.
So, but, you know, we're, we're just, we're quite ready for the, the level that we need to, to participate, but we could be. We want, we want to be, we'd rather participate more. And it's already middle of July, of July, right? So is it possible to go to that workshop, Michael, with, with the select board?
So the workshop will be a, a public meeting. But I can tell you the intent is really to sort of educate the board members to, the work is taking place.
Right.
Ahead of, of a lot of the presentation that will be televised.
Right, right.
Broadcast. And so, you know, if there's a, I think you can rest assured there's going to be additional opportunity for feedback.
Right, right.
In, in the month of August, I know I talked with Danielle about, you know, kind of Frank says what you're being scheduled, so there will be, you know, other opportunity. And we welcome the two members who are not able to participate, you know, that feedback as well.
Okay. All right, because, our, when's our August meeting? The second?
Uh, we're meeting the second.
The second?
August second and August sixth.
All right, so August second is perfect, because we can get some, maybe some info, we can get it to them. Though they might not be able to work, work all of the information into their presentation for the sixth. But at least we can get, maybe, put that on our agenda, we can talk about it and, and, you know, get, try to get a little bit more vision for that, for that area, which, you know, we haven't been really thinking up right now for, for the sewer.
In a zoning capacity, you mean?
Pardon?
In a zoning capacity?
Yeah, what we got, what we can do to, to help, you know, and, and what we, what we foresee is going to go there, what we should plan for. I mean, you know, obviously, better, better, if we have sewer, you, you know, restaurants are, are an easy add, you know, high-density population is an easy add. Laundromat, you're right, we don't have a laundromat. I had to teach our daughter, you know, this is back when she was eleven years old, before she went on the trip to wherever it was, down DC or something, how to use a laundromat. We had to go to Redding to find a laundromat. You know, we had to leave our town to find a laundromat. So that, I bet you that's something that could open. You know, things like that. But high, high water use, a hotel, what we're thinking about that. And that would be over on Concord Street, where there's a little bit more land. And it's, it's underutilized land there. There's, there's a massive, behind that little retention pond, there's a massive parking lot. And, and the building is, I mean, it's a big building, but it's not that big. It could be better. We could get better office space, or industrial space. Because we're not sure what office space is going to do yet. Assuming hybrid meetings have changed that amazingly.
And I might be going a little off-road here, but I, I think with the opportunity of changing over the face of Main Street, we should, and it's a separate topic, but on our listed to-dos, look into aesthetic improvements into the zoning laws. And spend a lot of time, as you did recently, out in Western Mass.
Looking around?
Well, going through certain towns, they have clearly ordinances there, whether it's a fast food restaurant, whether it's that really beautify the town. You can have all those places, they can exist and they look fine, and they just are aesthetically more pleasing. And again, if we, if, if we weren't going to change things with what we're doing here, but the sewer is going to change things. Properties that are a storage facility right now could convert right over, because it makes more sense to sell off and do X. There's an opportunity to aesthetically change twenty-eight. So I think we have to strongly look at that.
Right.
You know, along with the zoning bylaws that it supports mixed use or other things like that. That's, to me, what our contribution is. Every, every board has theirs, but that's like what we need to do. Do it quickly, so it matches up and merges right with the flow of sewer and development. And we want to get ahead of it, because people are good at build in advance of it, even though for some of the reasons we just said they might not. But there is going to be a little bit of good that going on, so we just need to be.
Good work.
Ahead of it.
Yeah, being able to build something like that destination location we talked about with the farmer's, indoor farmer's market and all that stuff, being able to provide for us a site like that, so that we would, we would actually draw people into the town.
Yeah.
So that's, that's something that, that opportunity will exist, so. Okay.
All right, anything else? Joe, do you have anything for us? I don't know, I, I guess I'm looking over there, but I can't see, I can look behind me. Do you have anything else to add, Joe?
I, I'd just like to say that, yeah, I think there's certainly additional time to, to really, you know, look at, you know, the uses along Main Street, Concord Street, and, you know, determine, you know, what you think is best. This is a study, you know, this isn't something we're going to be sort of in a position to, you know, assess betterments or, or, or just say this is it. You know, this is generating some, some projections, and, and we're trying to generate as well some, some thoughts on, you know, what is the best type of development with this proposed sewer. So there's time, we'll, we'll have more meetings with the board, and we'll have, you know, hopefully some, some good decisions made as, as we go along.
Great.
Thanks, Joan, and just to reiterate a few of the things that you just said. Yes, this is a big-picture study, just to make sure that, you know, obviously the sewer is a, a, a good financial investment for the town. But we're certainly not looking at each particular parcel and looking at what it could become. So I heard you all talking about some hotels or a laundromat. We're not necessarily going into the details of exactly what could come in. One of the answers I was hoping to have, not necessarily today, but to toss it in your mind, to see if we can get some feedback as we move along, is, it's a, it's a careful balance of not just unfettered growth, because the town at the moment is restricted or constricted, I should say, by how much water they can use from Andover, that's the three million gallons a day, and then how much water they can dispose of when the sewer is in place, which is the half a million gallon agreement with GLSD. So as much as we all want to think about, you know, hotels and all these and that, we need to make sure that we're balancing in how much the sewer can take. Either to make sure that we're not undersizing it, or that we're not ridiculously oversizing it either if this growth doesn't come. So I just wanted to put that in, in the ether, so that you're all thinking about it. And when we go over the part two, and we see the recommendations from FXM in terms of how much they project in terms of commercial growth, industrial growth, residential growth, we will go and look at those recommendations and assign a projection in terms of wastewater flows. And then we will come back and see, okay, is there more or less than the allotted five hundred thousand gallons a day? And if it's more, then the conversation becomes, what do we do? Do we create a sewer district and delineate who's allowed? Does the CPC have preferences in terms, I shouldn't say preferences, but an opinion in terms of, do we want to develop more commercial, I heard mixed use? Or do we want to make sure that, you know, single-family parcels become multi-family parcels? What kind of growth is, is the CPC looking for the town? Joe, I don't know if I represented all of our conversations properly, but feel free to chime in.
No, I think it was well said, Cecilia. I think, you know, there's decisions to be made on the limitations we have for both water and wastewater. So be interesting to see, you know, what are the limits? If, if projected growth could possibly outstrip those limits, then, you know, either, you know, a couple of things could happen. If we're limited to the five hundred thousand gallons of sewer and the three million water, then we want certainly, you know, see about making decisions that would bring about the, perhaps the best type of development in town. And how you do that, I guess, is up for discussion. But, yeah, there are limits, and we have to recognize that, or make decisions about potentially, you know, going, going in a different direction perhaps with slightly more capacity, or looking at other limitations that could be raised.
Great. Any more questions from the room? I think we're, I think we're good for tonight, folks. Thank you very much, great presentation. Understand a little bit more about what we're doing, and how you're doing, doing your analysis also. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And appreciate everyone's time, thank you for coming tonight.
No problem, thank you.
You as well, thank you.
All right, we'll be in a little while.
Yeah, I think, yeah, thank you so much.
All right, thanks everyone, have a great night.
Thanks, Joe.
Chris, I'm going to take a short break.
All right.
I have to step up.
You leaving us? Go take your tire off.
Thanks for coming, Mike.
Yeah, no problem, thanks for having us. Like I said, we'll be back.
All right.
There'll be, I'm sure there will be plenty of conversation.
Yes. Just gotta wait for Warren to come back, and then we're
Hey, Joe, are you hopping off, or I got a question?
I think I will, I, I don't think there's anything else left there, any follow up questions, but.
I got one question for you, Joe. Um, it was to your point too, talking about the, the max, the 500, are, will the analysis have the breakdown of the connectable, if you will, properties, uh, much like the map here's? Or at least a quantity, so it's in a very bulk form, it's this many properties divided by the 500,000, or into the 500,000 gives you how much? Getting to the point about trying to assess whether we have to modulate how much we promote the sewer usage across uses, is there, are they doing that kind of high level? It comes down to this, this much, uh, capacity per property or anything like that?
Yeah, well, we certainly have some detailed property by property of water account, uh, information that we know where things stand now. And, and so what capacity that would sort of take from the 500,000 gallons. And, and so the next question is, you know, what other, uh, expansion areas, uh, may be needed, uh, in the future for, you know, reserving that capacity such as like environmental purposes? And other, uh, excess capacity would be for the growth that we want to promote. How you direct that, you know, excess capacity, I guess is the question. Um, certainly it's, you know, supposed to be economic, uh, growth for commercial industrial sectors, I, I would imagine for the most part. Um, you know, if there's any kind of housing needs, that can sort of be discussed as well, I would imagine, but decisions would have to be made as to how to allocate the reserve capacity.
Great, okay. But there, we're getting some of that detail with this final report in late August, or?
I, I, I guess to, to some degree it'll, it'll show, you know, the reserve capacity, but also, you know, the types of developments that could potentially, uh, come into town based on the analysis. And then you can perhaps see where, you know, you rather redirect to this type of, uh, development as opposed to some other type perhaps. So, there'll be some, some items of discussion for sure in the report.
Yeah, and it, I, I, I get though the difficulty in trying to project too much, but even just baseline, based on like what you said, we have the water bills right now, so from that information, at least along the route, you could extrapolate how much just baseline connected you're, you're gonna have out of that 500,000, when you agree? And that's again, it's a, it's just a math exercise, but you'd be able to say, this is my usage across all these different connected, uh, uh, or what would be connected along the route. You'd be able to extrapolate how much just baseline right now, if everyone just connected, I'd be drawing or, or outflowing, right? Makes sense.
That's correct.
So, that'd be interesting to see that.
Yep, that'll be part of the details that will be, uh, packaged up in a, in a report.
That's all I have, thanks, Joe, thanks for staying on.
Alright.
Thanks, Joe.
Alright.
Have a good night.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night. It's a big area, though, you're right, Leon, it's a big, it'd be just interesting to see where, if you just turn off the nozzle, like what, what's it at right from the start with just those properties? Because we are gonna make them connect, right? It's part of the whole betterment thing, right, you're, if they're going by, you're gonna
The law in Massachusetts The law in Massachusetts says if you've got a, if you've got a functioning system, you don't have to connect.
But if you're gonna get charged the betterment fee and the connection fee
You may get paid, you may get charged to go across the front of the property.
Right.
You know?
So if you decide you don't want to connect, you're gonna get a better
You're gonna get, you're gonna get a charge for the pipe going by your house, I believe.
But here, here's the, here's the thing where the town, and this will be part of the workshop with, with really DPW select board is, you could give people that option of, I have got a perfectly working septic system. I'll connect definitely, I want to, I, I know I'm paying the betterment, but I'll do it in a few years. The problem with that is the amount of destruction to the road, you're constantly cutting through the road, they'll, they'll pave, and then now I want to connect. And all you're gonna see is all this cutting and
Well, that's
It has to be kind of a, it has to be a coordinated thing.
It's, it's the way they, the way they do the road, if they put those
The laterals in?
The laterals in to the sidelines.
It's true, I mean, maybe that's
They put the laterals to the sidelines and then because when D P, uh,
The moratorium, right?
When Massachusetts comes through and paves the road.
It's a moratorium.
It's a moratorium.
Five years or something like that?
It's a five year moratorium and I, now, a failed septic system may be an emergency. They'd let you cut the road.
For most.
Would be, you know, but if, if that happens six months after you put the system in, is that really an emergency? You probably already knew you had a failing system.
It's just stuff to think about.
Yeah.
It's a, but you're probably right, they would just, you know, but I mean, you can't just, I guess what I'm saying is if you're coming down Main Street and you have these, a parcel of land that is whatever, uh, 300 feet, 400 feet long, they, they can't just come up with where, this is where I'm gonna throw the T and, I, I don't know. I just think you have to kind of connect to it.
Yeah.
You know?
If you get a big property like that, you're probably
Because it's where your existing outflow is gonna be at your gravity, but then that person could sell and then you have a new development, then you're cutting back into Main Street again, so it just needs to be
You're always gonna have people who aren't going to.
Yeah.
We know that.
Yeah.
But I think in this whole math problem that we're
Right, it is.
Gonna make, you have to make an assumption that everybody's going in.
Yep.
Right, so you get an idea of what would be
If you don't make that assumption, you, you've, you've lost right at the beginning.
Right.
So you
So not only new development, you know, but right, like you said, Dave, but right from the start, everybody
Yep. Every, every address, every square foot.
Yeah.
Every linear foot of Main Street is gonna be tied in, or, or whatever we're gonna, whatever they're gonna service, Park Street. You know, those people on Park Street, they have residential houses and they got a fine septic system where they got plenty of property. They're not gonna wanna tie in.
Right.
You know, we wanna tie, we wanna get the, the business area tied in, not, we're not worried about the residential area. It's, it's from my point of view as a planner, because
I kind of agree, it's almost like the beginning part of Concord, you almost just wanna race, race down the street.
Right, just, you just, you just wanna put, you just wanna put a pipe in and, you know, if at some point someone wants to connect, that's fine, you can connect and, and you're gonna be
They're not that concerned.
Right, exactly, you wanna get from
But they're gonna be hit with the betterment though, right? There, there lies the whole thing, you're getting hit with a betterment.
What do you get for a betterment, right?
Yeah.
You know, they might have to pay something
So that comes to us.
That's right.
To decide, you know,
How you do it.
How we do it.
That's right.
Which is what we voted on at town meeting, that gave us the ability to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just talking about people like, on, on, uh, Concord Park Street, where it's just residential.
Well, actually
And they have good septic systems.
Park Street's not so bad off, but what happens is when you go off to the right down Nutt Road, Main Street
That's where it's terrible.
The, the septic systems down there are like five feet in the air, because the water table's so high.
Yeah.
So when we did that, when we did that whole wastewater advisory committee that I was on for 15 years
Yeah.
We did a matrix of the, the whole town, and we broke it down by where the high needs were, so a, a quick review of that matrix will tell you where the, where, where, where you really need them.
Yeah, they're not, they're not looking at tying in Nutt Road.
I know, but, but I mean, I was noticing that, but I didn't say anything at the time, but I can tell you, there are a number of places in town, um, uh, in, in that area where, where you need, you really need sewer, because it actually is costing a lot more for them to put a septic system there than it will cost for sewer. They'd gladly take the betterment.
Well, you haven't seen the betterment yet.
Well, no, we, we did, we did, there was a little bit of an analysis done about the betterment being somewhere in the end of, of $29,000 or something. And, and, but these systems down there now are gonna cost $45,000, I mean, they'd gladly pay the betterment instead. Especially since you can pay it off over 20 or 30 years, depending on how the town decides to structure it.
Alright, so let's get, let's get into getting things done.
Give you minutes, right?
Um, we got minutes. I don't have a clerk. David?
We have Dave.
We have Dave.
Chairman? We, uh,
Mr. Redloff.
Okay, I got it. I move that you accept, we accept the minutes dated June 21st, 2022.
A second?
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Do we have Ryan or?
Jeremiah is on, he'll just step away, so I don't know if he's
Yeah, he's, he's silent and he's offline, so.
Yeah.
Three's enough, right?
It's okay, we have three, three's a, three's a charm.
Three's a charm.
Yeah.
So all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, three in favor, and Jeremiah and
Ryan.
Ryan, just not here tonight. Alright, um, discussion on the ADU?
Well, I don't know how much discussion we, we want, we have, because we basically, we've already kind of been down the road with this thing a number of times.
Did you read her new?
Yes, of course.
Which is, which is, I, I thought was concise, short.
I printed it all out, made a paper airplane out of it. No, I mean, it was, I think, I thought it was good analysis, good breakdown of, of what's in there and what's not in there. So that made it a lot easier to read, but, um, but basically it's a lot the same of what we talked about before. You know, so, um, the, the
But I think now
The question for, the question, well
Go ahead.
Uh, my first question, did we show it to Jerry yet?
He had seen that version before.
Yeah.
And we, we certainly talked about the contents of it, do you want me to
Whatever we do here, whatever we do with this, he's the enforcing, he's the one that's gotta deal with it.
Right, he's gonna be comfortable.
So that's, that's why I would, that's why my first question is, is Jerry Reddick, is he okay with it? Because it really doesn't give much more than we already, he's already required to give by the state law.
I can discuss with Jerry what the newest version is, um, of the bylaw, which is kind of the old version, but with a little summary in the beginning. And I'll, I, we can, we can sit down about that, um, and if he'd like me to do that before we have any more, you know, real deep stuff discussion on this, I can
Yeah, well, no, I, I think
It might be worth it.
We can certainly discuss it, but I think what really, what really comes out of, um, that is, I would hope anyway, that, uh, it would encourage people to do things, you know, properly, to pull all the proper permits and do everything, knowing that, that they could do that. But I think that the, that the restrictions in it, um, while they may be, acceptable to the, to us and perhaps to the select board when they look at it, it doesn't really go very far and, you know, requiring it to be a, um, a relative or a caretaker. I mean, it's, it's certainly, I mean, I like the idea of it being, I, I mean, I, I like the idea of using it to keep a family together, you know, I mean, that was, that's my, uh, that's what I think is, was
Right, that's the relative part of it, yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
What is the difference between an accessory dwelling and an in-law?
There is no difference.
There is no difference. And it, and this is exactly what we're basically writing here, is an in-law dwelling.
Well, actually, let me
Because you gotta be
There is a difference, there is a difference, actually, the difference is that the accessory dwelling unit is allowed to be separate completely from the other building.
Right.
And an in-law generally is not, generally an in-law is
Yeah, they have open, open
They can travel back and forth through, uh, through the whole house.
Right.
They have their own space, you know, but it's not necessarily locked up.
They actually may not have their own kitchen.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
In, in an, in a, but this, this you can have, it'd be a totally separate apartment.
Within the dwelling.
The, the building. What we want it to be is like Warren said, for relatives, to, you know, you
Well, that's
You go and you take the big house and you put the, the, your, your parents downstairs or, or first floor, wherever.
So, so what's the point of changing that, what is that?
We have nothing right now, at all.
You have
ADU, ADUs are not, are not allowed
Well, we don't really, we don't really
No.
We, we, what we have is a, uh, is following some state codes, according to Jerry, when he told, when I talked to him, that allow you to go, get right to the brink of, 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 and by leaving one item out or something, you can call it whatever you want. Because, uh, uh, because the house could have three different kitchens if you want, you know, and, and, and that doesn't make it a
Doesn't make it illegal.
You know, but however
It's the stove, I think, is what makes the difference.
Yeah.
You can have, you can have three different kitchens, but no, only one stove.
Yeah.
No matter how big it is, but one.
So that, so anyway, that, that, that doesn't really, um, so you can actually get right to the brink, that's the thing, without, and illegitimately, legally. But the people that wanna go that next step and, and actually make it a complete in-law, they're the ones that are gonna avoid pulling any permits, and so, so the, the, the big thing that, that I find attractive to, to having a bylaw is that it encourages people, says, okay, we're gonna let you do this, but pull your permits and everything and do it legally and, and legitimately and get your inspections and it's all good. And that way, not only do we know the things that, that, everything's code in one of those places, so we don't have a disaster in one of them for some reason, but we also are able to inform people like the fire department about how many people are actually in that building. How many units are in that building.
It is important.
But what's the point of being detached?
Well, detached, the, the problem, detached ends up becoming more of a, um, of a
Another dwelling.
Well, more of a, more of something like a, a rented apartment, as opposed to
That's my concern.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that, and that, we're, we're not
M V M B.
Yeah, we're not looking, we're not looking at those. And, you know, remember, we're on sewer, we're not on sewer, we're on septic. So, you may, you may probably already have a four bedroom septic system. And so if you take one of the bedrooms and make it into whatever, it's gonna be, you're still configured
So that's one of the things that's in this bylaw is that there has to be a septic, uh, you know, there has to be some kind of approval by the board of health that the septic system is capable, because if you have a four bedroom home and you add another, and you, and even in this bylaw, you can add a room on, you can pour a foundation, add on to your house and have that will be, but if that adds another bedroom, and your, and your four bedroom is now five, if the septic system is designed for it, then you're gonna have to redo the septic system, which is not, which is not a small cost anymore. So, um, so if you, you know, so if you were gonna do an, an, you know, a, a accessory dwelling unit, you know, you might wanna get rid of one bedroom and then put it in the accessory dwelling unit. And again, if it's for a family member or a caretaker, I mean, I, you know, I, I see people doing that. I do a lot of title file inspections and I'm in a lot of houses, you'd be amazed, you'd be amazed at how many, how few of them don't have that extra space set up.
Yeah.
And, and the standard
And none of them are real, really two families and they're all, a lot of them are in town here, and they have, they're just single family homes and you do all the paperwork on it, but when you walk through there, it's definitely got
You can tell it's only one family living there.
A separate whole place for another family, or, or usually, and usually it's a family member, almost always actually, it's a family member.
So that's why we have that, that's why we, we're writing it that way, is basically for family members and caretakers.
But then you have the police there. That's what I
You have the police there, anyway. Well, if you don't, then you gotta, you know
I'm thinking about when sewer goes in, like you were talking about.
That's Main Street, though, that's different.
Or tree
Yeah, the, those
It's different, but you might have to modify, you know, because of the one apartment.
Dwelling.
Yeah, that Warren said.
So we're now
Yep.
Right, you have to kind of modulate it maybe for that.
So what
Just something
Another layer.
What Jerry was running into is people were building a garage with a second story on it.
Right.
And then calling it storage space, and then once everybody's gone, suddenly it's got plumbing and
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you look, they got a 200
No, it has plumbing, but
Which you don't need
As Jerry says, they're not, they're not legally, they're not supposed to infer. So you have our plumbing wiring inspector seeing all the wiring and everything for an apartment. The plumbing inspector seeing complete vent stack all set up for whatever, and they're not allowed to infer for that yet. But what is it then, you know?
You know what's gonna happen.
And the permit says garage on the plumbing permit, and yet you're having a plumbing inspector come inspect what basically it turns out to be four or five fixtures, you know, to a vent stack that gets installed and roofed in and everything, it's just kind of crazy.
Yeah.
So the detached ones are, to me, have always been the ones that I'm the most concerned with. Um, the ones I'm not, in, in a more flexible would be in the home, and I'm open to it Um, the ones I'm not, in, in a more flexible would-be in the home, and I'm open to it not just being a caretaker and an in-law, cause if it's in the house and it's, and then we have good guidelines for that, both in the septic, all these kind of different things, then to me, cause to your point, it's so hard to police.
Yeah.
And, and who's, you know, even with the in-law thing, within four or five years, a lot of times, this is what a lot of towns comment, it's how do they know, the parents could have passed away.
Right.
Right.
This is, and we're not in that job of policing, right? And you don't wanna put that on Jerry or that, that team, it's not their job. So that's why it's like, do, do, is that really the gain, or is it just making sure it's a, it's a good reasonable space size? It's accessible, it's safe.
Yeah.
It's on the books, like, I could care less who stays there.
But that's where that detached, that's where I come into that.
That's it, that's where you get into apartments and.
Yeah, why would you want?
You're starting into apartments.
Yeah. I just think, I mean, and yet, you know, with the, with the attached, you know, the, the average you see out there for the allowance is nine hundred square feet, like just on an average, but it certainly goes up and down, but, you know, that's a pretty decent sized space.
That's huge.
Yeah, like.
It's huge.
You know, so I mean, as long as can be attached, I think it preserves a little bit of a character. And then there's those towns that have the carriage houses that are lovely, towns like yours, Melrose, you know, those should have a provision for those kind of carriage houses and things like that, but it's not everybody's house, it's like that.
Right.
So you can't just blanket that, say, yeah, build a garage, and, cause most people don't, you know, really don't have the, the land to do all that, you know, having this big, kind of, almost like a house.
Nine hundred square feet is a lot of, my daughter just bought a condo that has half of that, it's a one-bedroom.
Yeah, when I lived in Boston, I lived in a lot less than that.
So, so it's just, you know, it's the way it is. Nine hundred square feet, you could put a, how many, how big was the house you grew up in, Warren?
How big? The nine kids.
Oh, yeah, well, you did have three, that's a little bit bigger. But I mean, you, you can look at the houses on Swan Pond Road.
Well, it started a pretty good size, and then my uncle, who was a builder, lived next door, and my father said, get up here, and we had to, it was the same size all again.
Yeah, there you go. But the houses on Swan Pond though, probably only a thousand square feet, and they had three bedrooms in them.
It was more like a barracks. It was more like a barracks, you know?
Yeah, well, that's, you know, it's like.
Young boys.
All right, so, let's do that, Danielle.
I'll just speak to Jerry.
Yeah, and then, and then, you know, we'll go through this, it's, it's, it's small, compact. We'll talk about, you know, we'll go, if we ever go line by line, we will, we'll get, we'll get something out of it, you know? I know it's, it's, part of the board wants to get this done, we all want, I think we all wanna get this done as a board.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think what we got right there is, it's, it's not too expansive and it's, it's pretty much a nice, small package, not, not too big.
A place to start.
Yeah, and I, I don't see, um, I don't see, I, I say that if we didn't keep it compact like this and small, it wouldn't go anywhere.
That's right.
And the only, and, and so I think, I think Danielle did a great job of compacting this.
Well, thanks, but the compact part is only the summary, I mean, the actual bylaw is still as it was.
But the bylaw is the bylaw.
It does have all that link.
But I mean, but I mean, to, to, but, but, but the, the basic points are, it's, the law itself is not very expansive.
No, it's not, although.
That's what I mean.
Based on our discussion tonight, do you want me to take out that permission of, that requires it to be relative or caretaker?
No, I, I like that idea.
Oh, you wanted it to stay in there?
I think you should leave it in, especially for the other boards, or at least the.
Okay.
I think that's.
Let, let's, let's get something going.
They might want it, Danielle, I was just giving you my opinion, because of more enforceability. Um, but if I could recommend too, there's, there's all these, if you go online and look, but I found a pretty good resource, which is, um, this study that was a follow-up to a two thousand and six, but they did it in two thousand and eighteen. It's a pretty comprehensive one, done by the Massachusetts Smart Growth Alliance Commission, and I'll forward it to Danielle, who can then forward it to everybody else, but, it's like, and I'll just be candid, it's, it's like many of the ones that are published, and you can find online, they're, they're really promoting ADUs, so you have to take that with a grain of salt, but in the, the fair part about this one, I think, is in, they go through every category. Almost, it's really good, and it breaks down, and it says, in this category, sixty, you know, of the sixty towns, and they're all, they're neighboring towns, it's Wilmington, Reading, all, they're all in it, you know, it's a pretty good comprehensive list. But it, it breaks down on every category, it says sixteen of the towns do this, you know, they have this rule. Um, that's why I even came up with the nine hundred square feet, a majority have nine hundred square feet is the average allowable square footage for an ADU. And there's nuanced stuff, but it's, it's the one study and breakdown, it's about, you know, twelve pages, but it gives you a little context on every single one of them, without having to go look at the zoning tables of, of every single town, but you're like, oh, you know, this has pretty broad participation, this one less so. Um, and there's just funky ones, it's just really, it really, some people ma- some towns make you re-register every year an ADU, some go three years. There's a, a good, a good section on the owner, uh, owner certifying that they will live in the main dwelling. Uh, owner is allowed to leave for up to two years, it's just, it's all over the board.
Right, right, yeah, you got that.
But it gives, it gives, and, you know, everybody on the team, if we're all looking at it, and as I, I said to Danielle, I saw a table of it and I couldn't find it, but I've put it kind of into a spreadsheet that I'll send to you. So it's one of those things where you can kind of tick off, or you could even, if you wanna get fancy, and put the towns that are participating and say whether they do or not, you know, it's a yes, no, or if it's a square footage one, it would just be literally, you could look down the list and see every town what they allow by number.
What was this?
This, I'll, I'll have Danielle forward it to you, but it's a two thousand and eighteen study by the Pioneer, well, it's a Pioneer to the two thousand and six, and then the, the Massachusetts Smart Growth Alliance.
Utilized that.
Re-upped it, yeah, they re-upped, they took it and then updated it all.
Right.
And keep, you know, cause their participation back in two thousand and six was only, only like twenty towns were doing it in two thousand and six, it's now.
What was their impetus? Dave, what was the impetus for them to upgrade it, is, is this, is it?
I mean, they were funded by grant, you know, and I think there's just, you know, there's obviously a real push to get.
I think they wanted to update all the to- what towns were in the law.
Yeah, I just find, again, it's very pro ADU, but in fairness, it's, it's fair, it's just giving you just a, it's pretty good data.
Yeah.
But.
But it went from what, twenty towns in two thousand and six to how?
Twenty-six or something, until into the fifties now.
Yeah.
You know?
So it's, it's growing.
Yeah.
Yeah, in some, it's very small, maybe the way we wanna baby step, and then if it's successful.
You grow it a little bit.
You grow it a little bit.
I don't ever see it going to, to another building, a separate building.
Well, I don't know, I wouldn't say that, yet.
No, it could, but, you know, it's, it's what the town want, it's what the people want.
What the town want, right, no, no, what I mean, start small.
Yeah.
You know?
That's what I, that's why I think this is, this is probably just the way it is, it's pretty small, it is pretty small.
Danielle, I'll email it right now.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not too expansive, and I think, I think you can sell it, I mean, I think that's the key point.
While I'm here.
You're doing it right now, can't you?
Can you get everybody to say yes?
Are we thinking women like to target this for, um, the October town meeting? Um, do we wanna take any more time to have any more, you know, discussion?
Well, two, if I may.
Go ahead.
Chris, what I would, what I think, we, two steps first, we should, uh, definitely run it by Jerry and make sure he doesn't make, wanna make any major changes. If he likes it, and says, well, it's not perfect, but it's good enough, then we take it to the select board and do the same thing, and with, with the ability to say, Billy Inspector's gone through it, he thinks he can work with this just fine, that would be an important point, and, and if we, and if we get that far with it, on to the meeting.
I think October's kind of a push.
Yeah.
It's a push, it's really a push for October, I mean, I think we're already in the middle of July.
The warrant will close.
I think, you know, we may, we may ask the selectmen if we can get that on in June.
Right.
Usually, we do money in June, but sometimes, we can, we do these.
We can, yeah, we can.
You know, um, it's, it's, it's always at the purview of the select board. Um, but, you know, I think it's, it's kind of an important thing, and it's not like we've been not working on it.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a difficult, it's a difficult item to, to complete and do it correctly for this town.
Right.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff in there, I mean, there's, there's a lot of possibilities in there that, that people will be worried about, and so keeping it simple, and keeping it compact like we did, has a good chance of getting through, so.
Right. And, and you know that some of the stuff that people are worried about, it's already happened.
Yeah, that's.
And, and we can't control it.
I know.
And we may not be able to control it even with this, so.
Well, you know, again, the, the, the value to this is to, is if people say, can I do this? If you say yes, pull, you can pull all the proper permits, cause.
Right.
So you don't have to say no, and as long as, because then you know.
They get a list of what they have to do and complete.
Everything's been properly inspected, everything's gonna be safe.
There's something to refer to.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of advantages.
And the biggest thing is right away, is making sure your septic system is up to snuff.
Well, that's, that's, that's.
That's really important.
But with sewer, again.
But there's only a few houses that are gonna be impacted by that. It's only a few houses that.
Go up through McIntyre and all those places up there, they all got two front doors.
You know, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, you know, where I live, and that's where I live, that end of town, I'm on Swan Pond, and, and McIntyre's behind us, and, they got all these big parcels, and they got huge houses, and some of them are done. When you go and you look at the room above their garage, their three-car garage, it's almost nine hundred square feet.
If this does pass the town meeting and we end up having this as part of our zoning bylaw, it might not be a bad idea for us to put together a little guide to ADUs.
Sure.
Or what we did for, uh, in law design, if you use that.
I think it's a, it's a great.
Yeah, I agree.
This is what you need, and, you know, talking about it in real, simple language, so people aren't necessarily going to go and find out.
Checklist, no, just checklist even.
And, and that might be something we do for Tom Ening too, to get it by.
Yeah.
Just do a little checklist, so people can, can look, okay, so these are the things you've gotta pass. The first one's gonna be, can your septic system handle the number of bedrooms? Cause you're adding a bedroom.
Yeah.
You may be adding a bedroom, or you may be taking a bedroom and moving it to an ADU.
And maybe even a little something about how it really is, um, you know, important to do this legally with the proper permits, because if you fire and these departments really wanna know where everybody lives, you know?
Right there.
Explain to people why.
Yeah, because I, a lot of the ones, a lot of the ones that I've seen do not have a secondary egress.
Right, they don't.
They have to come, they're in the, maybe in the basement floor, and they gotta come all the way across, go up the stairs and get out to the house.
And they might not be able to go up the stairs.
That's right, that's right.
And the fire department doesn't know that.
Right.
And they have oxygen.
So it's things like that.
And the fire department doesn't know that.
It's things like that that you avoid when you do it, when you do it properly, so there's a lot of safety involved.
That's correct.
And, let's face it, like you've said, if your septic fails because you did this.
Yeah.
That's an expensive.
Yeah, it's.
It's expensive and you may not be able to afford it.
Well, again, that.
The neighbors aren't gonna be happy either.
Basically, what you gotta, what, what, but according with the way, in, in, in this bylaw, it says that the Board of Health has to have.
Right, no, 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 that's the, that's like number one, Warren.
I don't think so.
You don't, you don't think that's the.
No, I, no, I think that all of the other rules that we have in there come first, and, you know, these are the things you need to do, and make sure that, that, and then to say, to make sure that this, that you can meet this criteria, and let the Board of Health make that decision. I mean, you know, that's, that's basically the way, the way it should go, and so. I mean, there are a lot of houses out there that I've done inspections on that have four-bedroom designs and only three bedrooms.
Right, right.
So they, they arrive for something like that, and they don't even need to do anything.
Yeah, so my house has only got three bedrooms and it's got a four-bedroom system in it.
See, I, see, a lot of people.
Is a four-bed, is a four-bedroom typically a ten thousand gallon tank, is that kind, is, is the ten thousand gallon tank kind of?
No, 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 no.
So that's kind of the average though, what most people put in them.
No, no, they're five thousand ga- no, fifteen hundred gallon tank is all you gotta have by code.
For a fourteen, four-bedroom?
Yeah, it used to be, it used to be a thousand gallon, and then the, and, and then the ninety-five code came along. And, and a lot of, a lot of towns were doing fifteen hundreds a lot before that.
Right.
But basically, it's double the daily flow, so, um, a, a five-bedroom home is, is basically five hundred and fifty gallons a day, two times that is eleven hundred, so fifteen hundred still works.
Got it, so that's how they calculate it, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's how they calculate it, so.
I knew that at one time.
You don't need to know it, he's here.
That's what I mean.
All right, so, uh, the Economic Development Committee, we need to appoint another member, cause I'd like to not be the active member, but we're missing two people tonight.
Next meeting.
What's that?
Next meeting.
You know we're all looking at you.
There's a trapdoor here.
And you know, I, you know, I talked, remember what about members to do in that, remember Billy? I had Billy was, I was on, on the board, and then I told, Billy was, became the member, but I went to all the meetings, it's not like I, I go away.
They're pretty quick too, they're not.
They are. But, but the responsibility is a little less on, on the people who are not voting members. So. So let's do that, let's look at that next meeting.
Sure.
Please, uh, ZBAs?
So we don't have any ZBAs for the upcoming meeting, though I did just wanna address a couple of applications that were on there last meeting, because we didn't have a meeting prior to that, and, um, Jerry had expressed some concern and wanted some input from the CPC earlier in the week and unless, and last week, but he ended up meeting with the property owners, and I just wondered if you had a give you an update on what has taken place for both of them. Um, so for, back to my notes, I, cause I, Jerry and I just spoke about this today, um.
Is the meeting Thursday, or?
The meeting was Thursday.
Was.
Last Thursday.
One of those again, yeah.
So they've both been continued though.
Okay.
Um, so there is time to give input, but Jerry, I just kind of wanted me to update you all on what had taken place. Um, so one forty-two Main Street, um, and one forty-four Main Street are being, were looked at together by the CPC when we did the site plan review. But one forty-two, um, the gas station's been, is, has been sold, and so the access is not necessarily going to stay open, or actually shouldn't say it, it's not going to stay open. The new owner has, um, made it clear that he's not been given access. Um, so the way that driveway was around, uh, to serve the mobile homes, um, is, is not open, um, and so, uh, part of, so Jerry had let them know that they needed to come into the CPC and modify their site plans, we looked at it together. And, um, it's, it, it does change the way that site works, um, but he can't require one site to give access to another site, there are two of them properties. So.
So you're talking the, the gas station and the.
Yeah, the gas station, yeah.
The, the fenced-in lot.
Yeah.
That's all under a different order now.
Yeah, and the other thing that's happened is the fenced-in lot, the fence itself has become quite altered, um, it's not quite the same site plan that the CPC approved back then.
And I don't know who is in there, cause it's not the same people that were in there before, cause no, it's like a contractor or something in there.
No, I actually have the, uh, the new ownership information, which I, I have in file. Um, so, these are some things, so, so what we're going to do is, um, well, he, Jerry has, uh, so he said the ZBA continued that one until, uh, September. Um, and he would like them to come in to, uh, have a site plan review for any changes that they wanna keep on the site that are, from, you know, that have been altered from what was originally.
Yeah.
So I'll keep you updated on that, um, it's.
The new owner of that, did the guy, was it the guy that owns that, the, um, trailer park out back bought that property? Did he buy that property?
I don't, I don't know if he was the new owner. So it had previously been.
Well, the question, the, well, the basic question is, is, is no good use for that property if it's not attached to something else, because it's just an open lot.
What, are you talking about the gas station property?
Yeah, the one next, the lot next to it, the fenced-in area. The gas station is a standalone.
Part of the mobile home property.
Pardon?
That's the mobile home property.
Yeah, well, that's what I was asking.
No, the fenced, the fenced-in property, that's part of the gas station property.
No. Used to be.
That's part of the mobile home?
Yeah, it used to be. No, that, that, the fenced-in property, Chris, when we did.
Yeah, I understand.
We did the site plan review there, that piece of property had to be fenced in, and, and it belonged to the gas station, and the gas station was, had a car sale license, and they were gonna use that, that lot there fenced in for the storage of cars that had been prepped for sale. But after they made a mess of their, from what I understand, made a mess of their car sales thing, I think they lost their license.
Yeah.
Okay, so then they sold the gas station itself without that lot next door.
Yeah.
To somebody, to an independent operator who runs it now. And that, and that lot on the side either stayed with the original owner or belongs to the, the, to the, uh, the, the mobile home park in the back. I, I don't know who the new owner is of that, but it is not the gas station owner. But when we did the site plan review, those two properties were connected and, and that was the use. For that particular fenced-in area was for the prepped cars to be sold.
Okay.
That's, and yeah, that's what the.
That's the way it works.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, you're right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that is, that is on the same property as the gas station. Uh, actually, no, it's not.
It looks like, if you look at the map.
Yeah.
We got to find the map.
The property line ends, see this little rectangle back to the gas station property? And the mobile, and the mobile home, no, no, no. Okay, so I think this is the property line here.
Right.
Yeah, so here's this car storage area and here's the mobile home area and here's the driveway that goes all the way through.
Oh, to the left.
Yeah.
So I don't even see that.
So that is going to be stopped there now.
Yeah, so they put Jersey barriers here.
Okay.
And so.
That's the, that's the driveway into that.
Makes it very difficult for those people to get in and out.
I'm sure it does.
Oh, yeah, because they only got that one on the left-hand side now, that access, right?
Yeah, and there's no way to really turn around in there.
So, so what, so, so according to what you got right there, that fenced-in area belongs to the mobile home park?
It does, yeah, that's one forty-four.
All right. See, now that's a major difference between what, what we approved on our site.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Major difference.
Yeah, yeah.
Major difference. So they, not, not only do, they have to come in.
Yeah.
They have to come in because they made a change, a property, a property change.
Right.
You know, it's.
Well, the, well, the question, well, the question now is what is the proposed use of that fenced-in area?
This, I saw something in it that looked like contractors.
They're just keeping stuff there.
Yeah, it's storage.
It's not, it's not what it was when.
It's storage.
Yeah.
And it's not good storage, I don't think. I, I would say they're probably, somebody's renting it to put their stuff in there.
Yeah.
I was going to actually ask you about that.
So. Oh, okay, yeah, so Jerry's on top of that and would like them to come in for a site plan review. Um, so I'm guessing we'll be seeing them soon. Um, the other thing he wanted to discuss with us was, uh, the Redding Lumber property, which, um, they're also in front of the C B A because, um, they were appealing a cease and desist that, um, Jerry had issued, um, based on a, a bunch of issues relating to storage that was not in the places that the C P C plan says they can have storage. Also, um, keeping heavy vehicles, which, um, he had said was not even just a storage issue, it was just a use issue.
So I, so I talked to Jerry, found some length about this, about this site. And I also sat and talked to Danielle about it for a while after talking to Terry about it. And, um, his contention is that, first of, number one, she's correct. They, the, um, the storage of materials that we dictated to them on that is not being followed, okay?
Right.
However, his, his, his second and third thing are all them cranes on the left-hand side. There's no, there's no, there's been no allowance for them to be, they don't belong, they just showed up.
Yep.
Then on the right-hand side, there's a bunch of construction equipment and everything, which he also says is not supposed to be there.
Right. Shouldn't be there either.
Um.
What, what can be there, you know, or should be there based on the previous plan or, or.
Basically, it, he, they, he's allowed, this actually goes a long ways back, so there's, there's, there's some question. There's some question on the right-hand side about how long the equipment's been stored there. It may be a long, long, long time.
They had, they originally had, um, the shed people there, right?
Yeah, the shed people.
They, they were in there and they might have had.
Right now, you, right now, the shed business is still allowed there.
Yeah, but it's not there, it's gone. They, the Redding Lovers took them out.
So Billy, Billy, that's because Billy was the guy that was building the sheds and he died.
Right.
So, um, so when he passed away, the shed thing kind of went away, so.
And, and suddenly it was, now, I know what you're talking about, there was equipment storage behind the sheds. And I think it was, I think it was equipment used for the sheds. Or storage for the shed stuff.
Well, there was, there was, uh, yeah, there was some trailers for storage of parts and stuff, but, uh, but then there's, but, but there's construction equipment.
It's an excavator, yeah.
Yeah, now, now there's, yeah, we've been complaining about that for a long time.
But there was, but I, but I think that, I'm trying to remember how far back it was, but that there wasn't anything like that.
I've been seeing that the whole time I've been in North Reading.
Yeah, well, I, I think I've been seeing it for a long time too. So, so that side, there may be, there may be some, uh, if we've gone through, well, first of all, that's a separate piece of property. Okay, there's a property line between the built, the, the building there and that piece of property, so there is.
Where the driveway is probably.
Yeah, yeah, so, and I actually, and, and actually, if you look at that, if you look at the site plan that we just went through for them to put that new building.
Yeah.
There's actually a lot line changed there in order to make the grading and everything on, on that lot. So, so, so that, so that separate lot, having been used for storage for a long time, may have some.
Grandfather's place.
Some, some level of previous permission or something. The other side with the cranes, not so much, that, that's completely all new.
It's real new.
Okay, so also, you know.
Is that a separate lot too, or is that part of the law?
Rumor has it that guy found another place to go with all that equipment and he's going to move it out. But that's been going on for a few months now and he hasn't gone yet. So, uh, hey, now you're up to date.
Yeah, yeah, and it, it, they put up a fence to put storage equi, uh, equipment behind, now they got cranes behind it. The cranes, you can see the cranes on top of it.
They put up a six-foot fence and they put a thirty-foot crane behind it.
Right, exactly, that's what, that's what I'm talking about, it's just ridiculous.
Yeah.
You know, it's ridiculous. And, and, and the, the stuff that was supposed to be behind the fence.
The fencing was not for equipment, the fencing was for the storage of materials.
Storage of materials, and that material is out on the side where you can see it now, or in front of the building.
Well, they, they know that, that the stuff that's on the ground, that's on the walk in front of the building is allowed.
Yeah.
That was in their agreement and what they were allowed.
Original.
I think Sauer's going to come solve that whole problem.
Well, it'll be nice.
Perfect lot right on.
We lost, that, we don't, that's the only hardware store we got left in town.
I'm not saying to go to the hardware store, I mean, that all bars are allowed.
Well, it's still a real hardware store, you got, you got, Marty had love, they're not a real hardware store anymore.
Well, they're a lumber company, and they have all what they, what they should have.
That's right, they go, they go what takes care of the contractor.
Yeah.
Not that they didn't want to, they did have, if you recall, they were here for a special permit and then two thousand eight happened.
Yeah, well, they, when they, when they, um, when we lost the other hardware store that.
North Reading Hardware up here, they have.
Yeah, 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 Jolly really, really expanded his store quite a bit to, to pick up the slack, so.
He did. He did.
So he's, so I think, I think as a business, he's a valuable asset to the town.
Very much, he's a great store, he's redone the whole store too.
Yeah.
He doesn't like to rule follow.
Yeah, uh, that's the problem that Jerry was having, he says, he, while he's talking to him, he says, yep, you're exactly right, yep, you're right, Jerry, this is correct. Jerry walks out the door and you couldn't do anything, so that was his complaint, but, um.
He doesn't, he doesn't rule follow at all.
So anyway, he's, but just so you know, the, 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 the left side definitely is, but I think it's, it's going to self-solve to some extent and then, uh.
We've got to do something with the right side.
Yeah, but, but can we and do we? I mean, that's the question, so.
Well.
Jerry and I are going to be going out on the site with, um, their attorney, we're going to be walking the site. They're, at their, at the, at the owner's request, we're going to be showing them, looking at the site plan and saying, this is where you can have storage, this is where you can't. This is where there's an issue, they're, you know, we're going to be talking it through with them on Thursday, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, more, more to come on, on that, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Anything else, Danielle, on zoning course stuff?
Um, no, that was all I had for Z B As.
Do you have a, anything on a planning update?
Um, yes, let me see what we haven't already talked about, talked about. Oh, I just wanted to let you know, the Housing Services Office, um, as I had mentioned, and we also worked it into our budget. We were changing to a consultant-only model and so, um, Anzer Advisory had been the successful, um, you know, uh, agency to respond to the R F P and, uh, they rewarded the contract. But our first kickoff meeting with them today, they seem really, really capable, really knowledgeable, so, um, that's going well so far. I have a feeling we're going to be offered, um, quite a bit more in terms of housing services and support than, than we were before. They just seem really knowledgeable. The application for, um, approval for the eight new affordable units at Martin's Landing, um, has been prepared by Pulte. They've given it to us, um, it's going to be moving on to the select board for next meeting, uh, for signature. Uh, there's, um, uh, once it reaches that point, the entire application goes to D H C D. And then they will either, uh, tell us we need changes and it may have to come back for signature, or they might accept it as it is. And then we will be able to get those units counted out of the inventory. And so that's good news. Um, in case you hadn't heard, but I think you have, the ability to have remote meetings has been extended through March twenty twenty-three. Just wanted to mention that, not that we usually do remote meetings, but just in case. Um, let's see, a couple of projects we have coming in soon. Uh, twenty-five Maple Road, um, for the same thing, basically, the twenty Maple Road came in for a few years back. Um, started off as a determination of access, kind of morphed into what became a subdivision application because it was on a reported subdivision. So we will probably be asked to look at that soon. Um, Town Council's already involved. Because Jerry and I both, um, know that there are issues with access and zoning that, that need to be looked at for, for that.
Who's to perform?
Uh, Mr. Smith is to perform it.
So, yeah, so we're talking about, we're, we're getting back into this grandfathered access thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
So I, I, I think it will be treated the same way the twenty Maple Street was treated, with a need to come in to approve a subdivision and, and street improvements. But I, I will wait to hear from the council before I tell you that for sure, but that, that should be coming in soon.
But if we're coming off the one that was just done, the one, the one that was just done was only, is, is, I think, did we actually get twenty-one feet or did they only get eighteen on that?
So we can't ask to widen the road, we do know that, because, um, it was shown as a twelve-foot right-of-way in the subdivision plan. So we are not going to be able to request that, but we can request paving, we can request.
But is, is it, is it a twenty-foot layout there?
I'm sorry?
Is, is there a twenty-foot layout in, because that, that was the, the wood lots over there, so.
Well, what was shown on the subdivision plan was only twelve feet.
Oh, okay.
If there is actually more room, there, there is more room in some areas, but I don't know.
I thought we couldn't ask them to go and get, uh.
We can't ask reinforcements for widening.
That's what I'm saying. But if it's on his property, we can make him widen it to, to a wider road.
We're going to ask him to.
So you can ask.
We can ask.
But.
Well, here's the thing, I wonder, I wonder, you know, I mean, the, one of the things we, we ran into before was the fire department came down and said, listen, eighteen feet, got to have it, that's, or it's unsafe. So I'm wondering, you know.
They can't pass two, they can't pass two vehicles on twelve-foot road.
But I think they can't, we can't really deny access to a lot that's been shown already on approved subdivision and has been reported. So I, I, I think rule of the limited with, with a situation like this, with, you know, a hundred.
Well, we can beg.
I'm sorry?
We can beg.
We can beg.
Sure, sure, and what we can do is do anything.
We can appeal to this, to that, to safety, you know, really.
At least the road got paved, I mean, up to a point, the road didn't get paved years ago, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we, we couldn't even make them do that, but they did that anyway.
They did.
They did that for their own good.
Well, we, we did require the paving, but then.
Yeah, we contributed to it.
Got, no, the building permit got issued even without the paving, but then later on, the paving was done.
Yeah.
The paving got done, that's really.
Yeah, it, it, it missed somehow, didn't get on the building permit.
I think what happened was the building permit was pending for so long that the town didn't do their part in terms of the grading that they had approved.
Right, it was supposed to grade that, yeah.
And so I think the permit got to be issued. Anyway, that was a long time ago, but we might be getting the same thing again soon, so.
Long time ago.
And then one forty-six through one fifty Park Street, we should be getting an application soon, the conservation agent and I met with, um, the, uh, the developers team, uh, recently to just talk about some preliminary things prior to their submittal. They're almost ready to, to submit that, so we should be seeing that soon, which is great. Um, and, oh, I just wanted to let you know, our town engineer, John Clippeil, is, uh, leaving for another position in his hometown, Salem, New Hampshire. So just wanted to mention it, I know there were some things we had been, I know, I know, real bummer.
It was a loss.
Yeah, real loss, for sure.
A town engineer, you said, yeah.
Must have busted his chops.
Quite a bit, yeah.
Yeah, I understand, since my servant left.
Must have busted his chops too, but, no, I'm just kidding.
Always got a long way to travel, if he can stay home, I can understand that.
Yeah, I know.
That is a long way.
So I did want to mention that too, because we were given a draft of the corridor study that, um, we had been working together on for, for Route twenty-eight. And I know I mentioned it a while back, but I wanted John to get his eyes on it before we actually really discussed it at a meeting in case he wanted any changes to be made.